There is a very young and dynamic man who vied for political leadership in the form of a parliamentarian in the just concluded elections. Obviously, he wasn't successful, so we did manage to speak to him. And he somehow was willing to join this channel today so that we can discuss a host of issues. One of them obviously would be why he did not succeed, what were the reasons? Yeah, Fat Matter Kamara is not connected, but Fat Matter, you can hear me, can you? Can you hear me? If you can hear me, let me know, I'm trying to connect you, okay? Brother Konte Julius, welcome to the program. Victor Wiesmann, I don't understand emoticon, but thanks for joining the program. Sister Fat Matter Kamara is trying to connect, boy. She is not connecting for reasons that I don't know, maybe probably. She's made it, okay?
Sorry.
Are online?
No, it's a bad phrase.
Yes.
Nah, F A.
F A, how are you?
Not bad, sir, everything.
Not too bad, not too bad, this not by accident.
Oh, yeah? I've been trying to connect, what it's like.
All right, but at least you have connected now, so maybe you get one or two things for say, if you will please?
Um, you mean about what? Because I didn't hear anything that was going on.
Okay, um, obviously, you know about the, you know about the channel, that's one thing, one good thing.
Right.
Okay, then secondly, um, today's particular program, we did talk, we suppose for interview a guy called Mohammed Kamara, AKA 111, where they present a constituency in a free town. So recently, this guy vied for leadership in another particular area there as a parliamentarian under the APC, but unfortunately, he not succeed.
Right.
And many other things, so we call him today, he say, okay, in our mind, he go ready for talk to we. But as usual, not only the only thing down there, we can also weigh on other issues. For example, the cleaning process, there was cleaning just one or two days ago in the country. What in are you view? The ministers, they have just been elected, what is your view? Mister Sandy, we make, you know, yes, on edict, what in are you view? You must have an opinion on just general issues.
Okay, my own opinion here is, I believe, say, whenever time, and they try for, um, come up with something where we say concern the citizens of Sierra Leone, they're supposed for, um, and get together before never somebody says something out there. I mean, for make somebody say, for make, um, I think Mister Sandy, right? Who talk, who that, who talks, um, the, um, the cleaning process for continue till four o'clock?
Yeah.
Right? And then all of the sudden, we get another information saying, no, it not supposed to happen that way there. Everybody for go about in business. I mean, that's a conflict of interest, you know? Because Sierra, Sierra Leoneans them, I believe, was say, I mean, that we don't live their life for be free, they vote for we president and everything, then, then, then the one where they vote, the same people where they suffer, then the one where they vote. So I mean, if let me say things like this, they happen at the country, they're not certain of voting, who side they stand really? They're not really certain, because everybody confused of like, what in they go on? I mean, now, what in they happen, this they say this, this they say this, that the, you know, that the government, everything they just, it becomes so confusing, who side we stand? I mean, I think that's the confusion where they go on right in a salon, and we all, where they abroad everywhere, you know? And then secondly, back, I did try for touch on something, something happened for Ghana, something happened for Ghana, something happened for Ghana, where we say, um, we, uh, there where they abroad and they votes. You know, so I believe for say, um, that go happen to we too, for make we go able for vote now we country, you know, and then, um, you know, this diaspora thing for, for say, oh, since we there abroad or whatever, since it don't happen in West Africa, we are all West Africans, we supposed to get the same, um, fairness of, you know, anything what in they happen. I think that's not my own concern, and secondly, I thank you so much, because it's like, you do so much. You do so much for bring come people and concern, for make, you know, you go know people and.
Are you there? Yeah, sorry, nah, nah, normally, nah interference, you see, I make a knock, he like for use this backup system. So I'm having a good conversation with a good sister, and then suddenly calls the coming, and it cannot disturb the flow. But carry on, please.
Yeah, so we welcome with, you know, brother, where they come, I mean, everybody gets a free speech, and that was, that's the good thing about we where they abroad, because like Africa, where they, you can't say anything where they go against somebody. When you say they become a problem, I mean, you know, all that free speech they are, they need from, the world don't change now. We need for developing to certain things, and we be say, we all forget freedom of speech, of, of saying anything, like America has, so we can talk about Trump anyhow, we want for, you know, get nothing, what they do to we. But I long what him up there for talk, talk about president, he become, even now, now then forum, they are all there, so where you see begin talk about bill, they be, he don't talk problem more, you know, which, we all now, you know, that democratic, um, states where they leave, we all had democracy, so I mean, we all forget a fair rights of everything at this world, you know?
Sorry, F A, you put, um, you put him on speaker?
Um, not really.
What you, I dey hear you, but very faded, very faded, I really want for let the audience hear you.
I not really put on a speaker, I don't know why, let me click on something.
I dey, I dey hear you, but it's a little bit faded, I really want let the audience get you.
Okay, you dey hear me clear now?
Let the audience get you, to be honest, yes.
All right, you dey get me clear right now?
Right, so yeah, crack on, go on, go on, go on, please.
Yeah, I say about the freedom of speech and everything, you know, I believe for say, um, we all for gather freedom of speech, you know, everything, because whenever the president they come, you know, for vote for, we always, salon people, they always try for vote for anybody where team up, you know, they're all where they team up, we've got, we've got choose the one person where say, you know, this, that, because I believe for say now, God now ain't choose mother Bill, just like we've got choose, um, Trump at this country, yeah. But who people not go like that, but guess what? It is what it is, you know? We just go for, we just go for wait till five years and see, what in in the God give for do for we again, and then may God go make whatever way he plans say, they do for we now we country, you know, as much as not so we all like that, me not APC woman, sorry, I mean, I got to say something, me not APC woman. Yes, I'm APC, but now God now ain't choose and for we, we've got don't choose and for we, regardless of whether, whether, I mean, every, I believe for say, everybody don't accept right now, regardless, because you not get a choice. When you not get a choice about something, guess what? Too bad for you. That's just the way it is. Take it out.
My, okay, all right, sister F A, you touch on one or two key things, then we, I want just another brief twist to it.
Sure.
You talk about, um, the voting of, um, people in Adidas, para, to certain nationals, like the Ghanaians, for example, where you mentioned.
Yes.
But one thing I want say is, I not think say the Ghanaians then being just sit down on the laurels, and then act, and then wait until it happened for them. I think it was something that they, you know, yeah, they acted upon, then vied for them, then pressured them, yes. So what do you think say we can do? Because it sounds like, um, I'm not disparaging we community, but it sound like we so divided, especially so among, you know, your political, uh, lines, and party lines, like for example, I admire your temerity, me not APC, and they say I would laugh, even though you get for wait for five years, what you have to say?
Seriously? It's all good, man, it's all good. Um, I mean, just like what you would do, so you know, coming to social media, being on the forums, you know, saying something, you know, about we country, not like just saying, you know, um, things the way they destroy between you and I, something we get for better with salon, we get for good, said things they way better, not to like, just they go to affect we self, you know, and all make no sense, that I make not they ever come together, you know, together we can stand. You see, when I say, um, husband and wife, they say you become one, that's what they say. But salon is, exactly, but salon now, we all, you know, like divided, you know, I mean, everybody they not on, um, political, uh, um, what he say. But at the same time, whenever, whether an APC, an Indian choose on a SLPP, we should come together and, and, and move on, and try to do something better for we where they abroad, because look at that, are these two same business, and I ain't come with the whole shit, so, sorry for say the word, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, we, we, we get an adult audience, and, um, yeah, I think we can cope with that, thanks for that.
Okay, I'm sorry, these two same business, I can't with this whole tear business, so, so then you for clear that past day, nah, 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 the constitution, because we all not Sierra Leone, for the fact that you are born in Sierra Leone, you are a Sierra Leonean, even if you travel abroad, what makes, what in make you, where you travel out there, why? If, if your country was okay, you, you are not traveling, you gonna be, you gonna stay right there. You know, this not the thing where people are not able to understand, we can't just leave our country just like that, you know, for make who travel, no. If the country is sweet, who not they come now, all their country there are, before, before salon, now London, I didn't be the go, not to say be for education, for education, but now we are all over the place. America was not even the agenda of Sierra Leone by then, 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 you know, but then, then now, we are all over the place, because we country, even though things are, you know, getting little by little better, it's not yet hundred percent, but I believe for say we will get there, and because every president, they try in your best, you know, lot just say the truth about it.
Okay, since you, since you mention, you know, yeah, publicly, because I say publicly, say you not APC person, I want take on you little bit in terms of the APC, you know, yeah, personally.
Seriously?
Yeah, seriously, in the meantime, I want acknowledge some people, and quickly, Mister Joseph Konte, Mister Joseph Konte, I wish you can pick up the, 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 the chance for call this channel, let we talk, because I dey see that you're very, very active now the social media platform, which I very much appreciate, but I dey hope say you go able for express then thoughts, then they, then principles, then they, in a live channel. So if you got chance, and you are able today, please, please, take the opportunity for call live. Mister Mohammed Koutubu Koroma, I dey watch you, thank you for your good sentiment about the program, thank you so much. But there are things going on in the background in terms of the channel recently, we probably will get for talk about later, but thank you so much for joining the program. You also get an opportunity for join if you want come on live. Sister Gladys Cromer, Israel Ojekepapa Senior, and Sister Sarah Ula Tarawali, welcome. In the meantime, I guess Sister F A from the United States, which part of the states are you in now, please?
Yeah, you say what, sir?
Which part of the United States are you, please?
I didn't, um, Staten Island, New York.
Staten Island, wow, great place. Um, your party don't lost, we not wish for talk about that again, but it's so difficult that you, you can wish say, you know, want to talk about that. But there's five years in the waiting, or even more.
Yeah.
Are you this, are you, are you disgruntled somehow with how the party conducting self, you know, yeah, for lose the elections? You sound really cheerful, and I dey ask you a depressing question, but I want get to the bottom of something. Are you, are you upset, you know, yeah, that the party lost, and do you have something in mind as to why the party lost, and what they could have done to avoid what in happen?
Now, only two things then, I believe say why, because first of all, APC for being get corner, but because of Sam Sumana in business, understand? Now I make a loss corner, definitely.
Good.
Okay, and then, as I've been said before, the two same business about Kande Yunkela, come on, I mean, that's, come on, that's another second, you know, so the motion of we losing, because, um, come on, I mean, it just not appropriate for make, you know, everybody they run, let everybody get a free, just as I say, we all not Sierra Leoneans them. This are the only thing that we are this going to, we make, I think, say, we lose, if not for that day, I believe for say, I mean, we don't try small, regardless of what, we try small, even the, if we, if the bad baku or the good baku, something was there in the middle, for say, okay, you say don't reach at this party, I wait me say don't reach here, me say they can't continue, you understand? So that's the only thing I'm, 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 I'm pissed off about, but I mean, it doesn't matter no more, as I said, you know, it, it has been what it is, I mean, everybody need for move on, there was a reason why we lose, you know? I mean, what's up with that? We just get for move on and try for rebuild the APC, and try for see where we can stand the next time, that's the most important thing.
Um, brilliant contribution, me sister, um, on one final thought just before you go. Um, obviously, you touch on many issues, it sounds like you not been a good touch on issues, but you, you, you heavy, you, you just touch on many, many critical issues. One final thought in terms of the two same. Give we, I almost feel what you dey try for say, but I not just want be wrong. So in other words, okay, la parafreza, revisit this two same thing, so the Sierra Leoneans them, wide, far, and near, can bene, can benefit, not of us Qatar we, now much more, anything where you say or do, for kind of bring we together, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay?
Okay, um, about the two same thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Kande Yunkela is a citizen of Sierra Leone, he was born there, I mean, raised there, before he got a job in the UN. You understand? So if this money I don't go get a job now UN and everything, I believe for say, even the job we begin at UN, it be the carnass alone, for car, you know, I see a picture of him and his Koroma before, you know, so it's like, um, I mean, you telling me that because I leave my country, and then come to another country, and become, you know, and get a passport from that country for me to be safe, or, 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 or get the privilege of that country, you are telling me that I don't have, I, I don't, I don't have, um, the mandates to become a president of my coun, of the bat of my country? I mean, that's a problem, that's a problem, you know, because I believe for, yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah, go on, go on, please, go on.
I believe for say, we all get the rights for go back now we country, and rebuild to country. I mean, and it's Koroma, we been, what you been say, you say may we on the diaspora, I might go back, not to say, logo build a country, then what's up with that now? What change? I don't know, what change? Is it because of the power we, maybe K K Y count? I'm sorry.
Okay, on that, on that, on that, on that note today, Sister, Sister F A, we go left a massage, but I admire and enjoy your contribution to this channel, I mean, first time, although you don't they watch, but today we'll bring you live, and your contribution be massive, please continue for support the channel, and let we invite friends and families, so they go join this combination. Earlier on, we had Sister Fat Matter on the line, and that was a brilliant conversation, I dey ask them all for revisit this, this channel. Thanks so much, sister, um, F A, you take it off yourself, and we go talk again, okay? Thank you very much, okay. Brother Joseph, um, Konte, thank you very much for making it known to us that you are at work, me brother, for you dey make some major contributions. You know, um, it, it, it sound almost feisty in a positive sense, I say in a positive sense, the way how you can take on people them at the, at the, at the forum, it's great, really, really great. I wish we can get few more of your kind, okay, for challenge issues, for try for put issues, you know, eh, as in order, not to issue of partisanship, it's more of country first, because there are issues for let we resolve. But thanks, I know one of these days I will get hold of you. In the meantime, ladies and gentlemen, those of you that are just joining the channel now, and Mister Mohammed Kamara, AKA 111, if you are listening, because I've switched on to the backup system, it's impossible, almost impossible for me to call you. But if you are watching and you are listening, please call the channel now, because we are ready for you. I promised earlier on that I was going to call you, but I thought I was going to use the main system, but I'm using the backup system. So I'm asking you, please, 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 call the channel, so we can go ahead with today's program. Again, to all of you out there, let we share this program with friends and families. Today, we suppose for talk to Mister Mohammed Kamara. He's a young, dynamic, aspiring politician, AKA 111. There were many things want to be know, but I do little bit of research on the young man, and find out that even in, 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 AKA, now the constituency, who side we want go stand, now in a nickname after, Super Med 111, great name. So today, if we get an interview on this channel, for tell we one or two things we probably, we don't know. But I not see, it don't appear as yet now the channel, so Mister Kamara, if you are watching, or anybody who knows Mister Kamara, will you please let him know that we are waiting on him? Sister Angela Aminata Sorikamara, welcome to the program, and in the meantime, the channel is open, the line is open, if you want to call to make a contribution, please don't hesitate to do so. But while we dey wait for Mister Kamara, let I just highlight something, we're very critical, so we national psyche, I just want highlight this. Ladies and gentlemen, there is nothing, and I repeat the emphasis back in a million, there is nothing fundamentally different today than it was yesterday. By yesterday, I mean, before the elections, before the APC lost power, before Doctor Anesby Koroma lost power, so we go back to the runoff, okay? We go back to the runoff, with Doctor Anesby Koroma, and in All People's Congress lost power, and they say, there is nothing fundamentally different as to now, when SLPP, the Sierra Leone People's Party, is now in power under His Excellency Retired Brigadier Julius Madabio, than we were before the elections runoff. There is nothing fundamentally different. Now you're gonna be asking, why did I say this? Okay, it's simple, the reason why I say this is because the country is still the same. Tell me if we don't lost one inch of border line to any other country. This is serious, tell me if we don't lost anything, where we be made up of at the time of the elections and after the elections, if we don't listen to somebody else on the outside. In other words, holistically looking, this is all just about us. So ladies and gentlemen, despite all our flaws, despite our volatility, despite the insecurity that we suffered both then and now, despite our strength and our fears, our resilience, our hunger, and our pain, we are still the same people, the same people as we were yesterday, as we are now, and that's what we're gonna be marching into the future. That's why I mean by there's nothing fundamentally, you know, yeah, different today as it was yesterday, okay? It is the same country which elected Doctor Anesby Koroma ten years plus ago. It is the same country, the same people that have decided to elect His Excellency Retired Brigadier Julius Madabio, who is now effectively in power. So nothing has fundamentally changed. The country is still the same square miles and square feet, or whichever way you want to measure it, as it were. Everything almost basically remain the same, just a change of guard, change of hand. So fundamentally, not a critical word, nothing really has changed. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome my sister-in-law, Doreen Pratt. Um, welcome to the program, my, my dear sister-in-law, my beautiful sister-in-law. Um, I also want to welcome Sister Catherine K, welcome to the program, my sister. And, um, the channel is open, we are waiting for Mister Mohammed, um, Kamara, who is a former aspirant for constituency 111, he was unsuccessful in his bid, under the All People's Congress. I was hoping to have him here by nineteen fifty-six this evening, there's four minutes to, um, broadcast time. He was very active on social media, and normally, he watches the channel. I'm just hoping that he will call the channel now, because I did promise that I will call him, but we're using the backup system. I also want to use this occasion, because on the day itself, I'm not going to be broadcasting, I want to wish a pre-birthday anniversary to my blessed son, the man of my name, my junior, who turns twenty-four, okay, in three days' time. Son, I love you, son, we love you, you are not exactly where we want you, but we pray that things will change. We love you so much, and all I pray for is the meditations of the heart of your mom, her prayers will come into fruition. So as you celebrate another birthday, twenty-four, you be, you are now a man, I imagine all of the struggles through different continents, through different countries, here we are today. May you live long, may all that you wish for be your portion, in Jesus's name, amen. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the dinner now, I'm your host and presenter, Mister Prince Emil Cromer, welcoming you all to this program. Mister Abdul Zito Sissé, welcome to the program, and to all of you that are in London, I just want to use this opportunity as well to advertise a Liberian charity. When we say Liberian, it's almost synonymous, thank you, Sister Fat Matter Kamara, amen, in Jesus's name. When we say a Liberian or Liberia, immediately sparks memory of yesterday. Mister Christian Corgi, welcome to the program, my brother, how are you? I hope all is well, thank you very much for joining. This Liberian charity will be held on the thirtieth of June, right here in southeast, where demographically, we, as we the people, from either Konakri, Guinea, Monrovia, Liberia, Freetown, Sierra Leone, are largely located. So I'm advertising this charity because it's incumbent upon us to network, to support each other, because the Englishman has got a parable that says, scratch my back, I will scratch your back. Remember, if you do it for them, they will equally do it for you. So tickets are out on sale, maybe before the end of the program somehow, I will try to put it out there. There are also critical issues that are going on in the country. Recently, I spoke to a sister called Sister Syrian Bibi Kamara, who is an FGM, some people don't agree with the last, um, interpretation of the letter M, they rather the letter C. So circumcision as opposed to mutilation, and I can understand where they are coming from. And if the arguments can be made, maybe somewhere we can find a middle ground. Recently, she was in Freetown, she's appeared on this channel before, she's spoken to this channel, she's leading a very good and vibrant campaign, we've spoken many times personally, and both on tape, on camera, and publicly, we've spoken, so I understand who the mission is. But of course, there has to be two sides to it. There has to be the pros and the cons, and that's what makes the argument interesting. And I can make this known publicly, that what I said then, many, many, many months ago, is I do not appreciate another culture if there is victimizing, vilifying, criminalizing another culture which goes back centuries, I totally disagree with that. By then, we did argue on that, but now we've got common ground, because she's realized it. So even the mantra that she's come up with, which is enblazoned across her shop, that she owns somewhere in downtown Peckham, it says, lose the knife, keep the drum, that speaks volume, and I really like that. So she's gonna be coming back on this channel very soon, and we're gonna be talking about, um, her project, her exercise, and et cetera. And we hope in others, you know, yeah, with equal influence, with equal, um, know-how on this particular field, we'll also take up the opportunity so that we can have a discussion, because this is about us, it's not about somebody else. We cannot allow somebody else to adjudicate on a matter which belongs to us, which is about us. It has to be about us, it's us that need to be telling the others, not the others telling us. It shouldn't be. So ladies and gentlemen, all the same, today, we are meant to be speaking to one-time APC hopeful Mister Mohammed Kamara, AKA 111. He was unsuccessful in his bid, he was meant to be here today for an interview, so most of this program is designed for that particular interview. So we are just weighing out on other issues, hopefully, he will join. Let me just acknowledge a few people. Wow, Sister Fuambay Sia Amadu, welcome to the program, I believe this is your first time, I mean, this is a heavy sister. This is a heavy sister, and thank you so much for. This is a heavy sister and thank you so much for coming on. Thank you so much for coming on. Let me see if I can bring you on camera, Sister Fuambai Sia Amadu. No answer from live video guest. That's all right, but just the fact that we've got you here. Means that um the channel is doing well and it's reaching the ears of prospective, well-to-do, prominent people. Welcome to the program, my friend. Welcome to the program, my sister. Sister Princess Laila Ravina Jalloh. I always say that this channel has got names, names that I admire so much when I call them, the emphasis again are mine. I really, really like them. Princess Laila Ravina Jalloh, and there are many more. Pardon me, okay? So whilst we're waiting for um Mister Mohammed Kamara, AKA one-one-one. To take up the opportunity which we discussed about earlier on. We are open, the channel is open, if you want to connect and make a contribution to the channel then and now. You are most welcome. You are most welcome, okay? Earlier on, I was saying that there is nothing fundamentally different today. Than we were before the runoff elections. I mentioned the runoff elections because that's when decision was made. That's when power actually switched hands, because when we got to know the results, what happened on that day of the runoff. It's it, it's now historical, largely historical, but nothing fundamentally changed. And the reason why I said this is that the country still remains the same. We haven't lost an inch. Of territory to anybody else. We still remain in our full square, where we belong before the elections or runoff. As we remain now, okay? So despite all our flaws, all our mistakes, all our weaknesses, all our insecurity, all our strength. All our fears, all our hunger, all our pains. All our disgruntleness are disgruntled. We still are the same people, the same people who voted for Doctor Anesby Coroma and his All People's Congress. A little over ten years ago are the same people who voted for His Excellency Retired Brigadier Julius Mada B O. So this struggle is ours. Remember that nothing remains static, nothing. So as it was yesterday. It is not the same today. And it's not going to be the same tomorrow. So ladies and gentlemen, let us consider ourselves. Let us hold ourselves as a people. Let us question together the leadership in Sierra Leone. If it's going the right way, let us applaud them. If it is going the wrong way, let us not hesitate because of partisanship. Because of cronyism, because of nepotism, because of regionalism, to hesitate one iota. To point finger and say, no, you're going the wrong direction. We want to bring you in the right direction, because we are not doing it out of um individual selfishness, rather country first. How do our people benefit from this initiative? That is what is critical to us. Ladies and gentlemen, I keep saying that we are waiting for a young man who is supposed to have been on this channel today. To tell us, you know, few things that probably we don't know. Okay, to tell us few things that we don't know. He was an aspirant for um a constituency in Freetown, namely one constituency, one-one-one. Okay, and one-one-one is kind of unique, and these are some of the questions that I wanted to ask, to be honest. These are some of the questions that I wanted to ask. It's really, really unique. When he talks about one-one-one constituency, you're talking about a constituency that runs through Hastings, Robamba. Yeah, eh, Yams Farm. And you begin to get a little bit, you know, confused and et cetera. But to my understanding, that's what it is. That's why I really wanted him to be here. The first question I was gonna ask him. Was or is. What is this con, what, what, what is so critical and what's so strategic about the location of this constituency? And what about its name? Hastings, Robamba, Yams. Rokel, you know, yeah, yeah, Yams Farm, Rokel, Devil Hole, Deep Eye Water to Whitestone. Maybe some of you do understand that. But I got a little bit confused because some of the names that I'm familiar with, but the others, no, I'm not. Mister Victor Gabba, welcome to the program, my brother, as usual. Thank you. Others, I'm not. So I was really looking forward to having this brother, but up till now, he's not turned up. But that's fine, and equally so, I was saying, um. Uh, this channel appear to be attracting prominent people, and this is what I like about the channel. This is what I really like about the channel, okay? This is what I like about the channel. We are attracting prominent people, which means that the song that we are singing here is reaching the ears. Of prominent people and they are participating, okay? There are issues that we need to discuss. There are policies that we need to talk about, not just free talk. Because some of us enjoy the free talk. You think that talk is just talk. No, 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 we gone past that. Talk is real. We have to be talking real talk. We have to be talking about policies, and this is why I want to touch on another issue. I really, really want to touch on a, on another issue, okay? And this issue is about the cleanup exercise. I mean, who on earth will not applaud a cleaning exercise by our government and its people and its ministers? And all the authorities, okay? Who will not appreciate that? So I say that a filthy city. The cleanliness of a filthy city is an obligation of any government. This is what I say. The cleanliness of any filthy city is an obligation of a government. We can't say that the APC government left the country filthy. Why shouldn't we say? Because if you look back, just two days ago, the amount of rubbish that was gathered, I mean, that's just testimony. I always say, no, it's not blame and et cetera. I'm just trying to say fact. So that was just testimony of the diet that was left. Okay, that was testimony of the diet that was left. This government, the government of His Excellency B O, let me just answer a call quickly, please. I think the Mohammed is trying to call me, ladies and gentlemen, hold on. Hold on, please. Hold on for me, please, ladies and gentlemen. Let me see whether it is me that is trying to call me. Well, I thought it was you. No, it's not. So I just got a bit confused, my friend.
Yeah.
No, it's not. All right, ladies and gentlemen, my apologies, um. My apologies, my sincere apologies. I was, um, I had a call coming up on the other line. So I thought it's the man that we are supposed to interview today was the one, you know, yeah, calling. I thought he was the one calling. Yeah, there are a couple of um strange things going on, you know. I must make it known to you. You are my audience. You are my audience. And honestly, I must make this known to you. Um, we were meant to have an interview today, but up till now, this guy has not called in four minutes before broadcast time. Obviously, um, he was still active. Maybe something would have gone wrong. So therefore, um, I'm unable to get hold of him. He's not calling. And I can't use my phone actually to call, because um instead of the normal professional system, I'm using the backup system. Which has got an effect on the phone that I'm using. Um, just a quick um acknowledgement, um Mamu Al Conté. Sister Frances Fode, um, welcome to the program. We've gone deep into the program. But all the same, um, I say welcome. Um, like I was saying, there was meant to be somebody to be interviewed today, so we're just touching on other issues. What you have just met is me talking about the obligation of any government in terms of um health. And other issues, but in this case, we're talking about health. The rubbish that was left behind by the previous government has been, um, a process has started with this new government. This new government did not procrastinate at all. Yeah, thank you very much, Sister Frances. This new government did not procrastinate at all. He went straight into business and start cleaning up. They have begun to clean up some mess that was left behind. I'm talking about garbage, not every mess. Not every mess. I'm talking specifically about garbage, okay? So um, in this process, there are eyebrows that have been raised anyway. So even though I applaud this process, it's a good process. That's what I said from the beginning. Who will not want for their city to be clean? Who does not appreciate the look of Freetown the day after the cleaning was um was held? Who will not like that? But even though you will like that, and this is the difference. It does not mean that you can't raise issues if the rights of the people have been impugned upon, have been abused. Abuse is a strong word, so I would desist from using the word abuse, but impugn upon, which is more technically um more. Um, applicable to what I'm trying to say. So yes, we wanted the cleaning to go on and the cleaning did go on, but we heard. And this is on tape, that some ministers got a little bit excited. And they started making proclamation like ministerial orders. But this was gonna be part of this interview process, whether it was within the. Whether it was within the jurisdiction of the minister to make those proclamations. To restrict the people, because one thing that needs to be made clear is this is not a junta. And I'm not pointing fingers when I say a junta. All I'm trying to say in providing perspective is, in a junta, that's when everything that happens is by decree. Is by decree. So the constitution is suspended. The People's Holy Bible, Holy Quran is suspended. And it's all by decree by the whims of somebody, you know, yeah, of the highest power. This is not a case. This is a civilian elected government in a parliamentary democracy. And the rules of a parliamentary, parliamentary democracy needs to be applicable. It's as simple as ABC, simple as drinking cold water in a warm summer in London. So this is what we expect. So again, whilst the exercise was good, I commend and applaud and loud the exercise. But then, it does not mean that because the exercise is completely brilliant. That a minister will get so excited and then will now impugn on the rights of the people. By passing edicts, basically, laws which is not entitled to. Which in effect, in a technical sense, restricts the movement, the human rights of the people of Sierra Leone. Mister President, His Excellency Retired Brigadier Julius Mada B O, we are calling on you, sir, to take rain immediately. To understand these problems immediately and begin to address them. Mister Seku John Barry, welcome to the program, my friend. I hope all is good. Let me see if I can bring you on. Your brother with a strong opinion and probably you have a thing or two to say. I would like to take on you on this. So. You can't, you, you know, I mean, there were many things that me and Mister Mohammed Kamara was meant to talk about. What was his opinion on the reserves? That we've heard about. Mister Seku John, hello, sir, are you there?
Yes, sir, how are you, sir?
Uh, I'm very well, thank you very much. Um, I'm happy, you know, yeah, the, you always turn up when you are needed. Yeah.
Even though, even though you know, you know, call me, but at least today, I will, we don't able to see each other. At least me, you don't able to see me anyway, because me, you see you always.
That's a nice one. I like the way you cut the ice and make the atmosphere really, really light. Um, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who don't know, uh, this is almost, I like to refer to him as my sparring partner. He's a journalist, he's a product of Robey College, and he works for, is it the Prestige Times? I always get it wrong.
Premier News, Premier News.
Premier, the premier news. I don't know why I keep thinking of you as prestige, you know, I try for as high as prestige to you. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, yeah, he works for the premier news. He is a journalist by profession. He is a law student and is a product of Robey College, always with very good opinions, you know, yeah, very admirable and envious. Mister Seku John, today's program obviously was not about you, sir, but fortunately, you are filling in for somebody who would have.
I just, I just intrude.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you very much for intrusion. Sometimes there are positive intrusion and negative intrusion. This intrusion is a positive intrusion.
Yeah, thank you very much, eh.
Thank you. Um, earlier on, of course, you're joining the program very late. There was meant to be a brother to, on today's show, who I was meant to interview. Of course, I put out the word out there. He was a former aspirant for constituency one-one-one under All People's Congress. Unfortunately, he never succeeded, okay? So we meant to talk, so that probably he could tell us a thing or two, because this brother is a strong brother, is very agile, very dynamic. And I was hoping to talk to him on a public, on a public level, but up till now, we can't get hold of him, but that's fine. The channel moves on. I was just talking about a cleanup campaign in Freetown a few days ago. The campaign, by, by and large, was a successful campaign. But I was saying that it does not mean that because the place had to be cleaned. And this is not a military junta. It's a parliamentary democracy, a government that was elected. A minister cannot go, you know, yeah, proclaiming or making edicts, if you will like, restricting the movement of people. This is an absolute abuse. Do you agree, sir?
Yeah, yes, in fact, now that are the reason we make a, I just. Well, I think say this program because of now, but to country and we all like the same thing, whether in a APC or SAPP. The main thing we are fighting for, like, the objectives there, like, now for push along go before. That's, that is why, like, I decided to come, because, I mean, me they take and say, this program, now we young baby, now we get up. Yeah, so, yeah, like, I, I agree with you, honestly, like. The problem, like, I, I've said it, I know, I know gonna me on page, I write anything, like, on that. Because, eh, I, I mean, I, I look busy then this year. But like, what are they try for, like, you, you hundred percent right. Like, especially the, the minister, you know, you know, for don't do what you do. In fact, I mean, at the first day, I hear he say, I don't know what the minister order number one or something like that. No go, we no go like, me, me now, now hundred and fifty percent mother bill in supporter. You don't understand.
Thanks, thanks for making that, thanks for making that clear. Thank you.
Hmm, yeah, so, like, but like, what in eh Sandy do, like, he should not have. Have done that. He should have, like, what in me they say is. Eh, like, if I don't do, I'm like, in coordination with the other minister, because it was a shame. Like, we see he do that day, they will go see eh the Minister of Information, come back, they contradict. So it's like, you, you, if, if now, if now, any other person, I mean, we just dispel mischief, like, we causing then now. Because causing then, then, then like for capitalize now on anything, then use and then you wait. But like, I believe say, what me the advice is. Of course, we know they take and say, now military government or something, or they feel saying that era they would be. That is diagnosed, somebody who just wants things to be done. I mean, but like, eh, eh, fair protect account to what in happen. I believe say the whole thing. Like, the government as a whole, they know, like, they know, they mean the under rate, maybe the dirty way get for comos. You don't understand, and so the thing come come up, because like, again, on the other, and you define out, say, you know, make sense. They wanna pull dirty, wanna pile them all over the streets in a free town. Then later you expect, they say, okay, lay on, lay traffic flow, lay business people, then go begin set back on top that dirty, they not make sense. But however, what me they say, what in the minister for don't do, therefore, now at least engage, if I don't, then kick him, then they engage, they see. What in them for do them brainstorm. I don't know whether he, he did that or not. I don't know, but like, we see, anyway, but. As a result of what in happen, we will not say they not do any consultation, because. Otherwise, the so I read, no for don't come, a contradictory thing he say. So that contradiction, so say. There was no communication between them. So like, what me they say is like eh Sandy no for don't do what he do. But again, again, in the interest of, like, in the interest of the, we, we know they talk about legality. I'm not, eh, that, that was not legal, but like, it was maybe morally acceptable, considering the fact. That the dirty way been piled, I again, because you know, for, you know, for don't allow them people and they for go sit down on top. On top the dirty way then get on a free town. Then they back, you know, be make sense. You don't understand it. But but like, okay, people let me say now, hey, then for don't go now market, then for go don't go do X Y Z. I mean, it it is understandable, but now was it like? Was it nice for them, I mean, for them to like? Just allow people to go there and spread them, they 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 market on top that dirty day. So then for that thing, we explain I'm so that people didn't understand where that's why we need a communicators. So by, I mean, mother bill gets sober communicators. Now just of now just communication gap, now in the problem. You know, people they need for, they need for acts. Between the law, that that is it. I mean, we need for, because for cleaning, where we don't see now all man they praise what in happen to the like if I seen now Omar Fofana in page, we see. At least for the past twenty four hours, people in the brief a a good air, something like that. So let let not allow funny funny thing then for camp well that day. Because there are people that we bent on, I mean, for just discredit anything we. Mother bill in team they do. You don't understand people then did it, but. I mean, uh, Salo, I believe say where it come for cleaning, not to APC, not to SAPP, not to any other political party. All man they benefit out of that. So I believe about like coordination number now we need, now we need coordination, now we need. And discussion, we talk, we we include the city council, I I believe they said being included. So me now that normal I believe.
Okay, Mister, okay, Mister Mister Barry, it did give you, did give you a long go on that. And I absolutely agree with you, because now the points down the way I've been a try for making one or two people are the audience, you know, the listening public. They also agree with you, because when you make a sensible argument, you 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 know, you dissect the X from the Y and arrive somewhere in the middle. There's a consensus there. Um. You know, me say back again, because minister minister enthusiastic, because the program now good program. So therefore, it then went on, you know, for flound with the laws. But you made a brilliant point and I agree with you. Because um just yesterday, we get the same discussion. And we've been a try for talk about policy. This is an absence of policy. And you don't, you just don't mention them back. The program get for be, it get for be feasible, it get for be sustainable and etcetera. We not say all of that was not done. But it could be a trial. Okay, it could be a trial, but it's a good trial, because in the end. Like you say, somebody say people, Umar Ruffana, people are breathing fresh air and now they prolong the life of our people them. So per military terms, sometimes they say assignment is greater than rank. Not so because you know, general, it depend on some it map, a a big pass you day. So this could be a good, good analogy for this. But I'll move on to the issue of chief minister. From what you with the area from social media, Mister um Seku John, because you know well informed young man. Um, the role of the chief minister, a lot of people in the public domain question him, most especially the opposition. And these are some of the things that they gather and I don't say you have ever present in our social media. Is the creation of this position legal? First thing first, because it takes a saloman, no, but who don't have be law now. So we all the question issues on the basis of law. Um, secondly, on the moral ground, would they talk about cutting, cutting of budget and you know, yeah, fiscal appropriation and discipline? If you go create something where you not pull something you create, then add now you add. So fiscally, now any kind of discipline now they thirdly. Pull, and this are the political side. The creation of this position according to some people now complete on meaning. Of the position of the vice president by virtue of waiting chief minister mean. What you know you take, sir, what you know you understanding, you are helpful explain to me. Seku John, are you there? Okay, I think we've lost him briefly, but I'm sure he will come on again. In taped on frozen. Yes, in taped on frozen, okay? So Seku John, what you go need for this video, you need for come off and then. Frozen. So we go get for carry on. Okay, thank you very much. Hope say you get the, you get the, the story. So Sister Frances Fode, of course, you're very active there, because yes, of course, the guest speaker is speaking truth to power. He's saying, you know, yeah, things that are measurable, things that are fact and things that are, you know, kind of academic. It make the arguments that the brother not strange to me. We've been going on this for a long time. That's why I'm happy for bring and come on. Within I view. And this is a critical argument, Sister Ayodile Silves, welcome to the program. And um thanks for joining. Thank you so much for joining. Um. Brother Seku John, I lost you again. Lost you again. But I say Kujia, if you hear me, you need for send a request all over again. I just miss somebody a split second. Hang on right there. Hang on right there. I bring you right back and I think you should be back now. Okay, brother Seku John will be added in a few moments. He should be back. And what you will be to say, ladies and gentlemen, lest we get confused, is although the person who for interview today not. For some reason, don't, I don't understand. But we get a perfect feeling. We get a perfect feeling in the presence of Mister Seku John Barry. So Seku John Barry is a law student. Is a product of Furabey College with creme de la creme in time. With creme de la creme in terms of academic. And um is also a journalist for the Premier Times. So we still they try for connect with him, I can see this probably in an internet problem. Because I can see the connection, the string, just like we, you load something, a file or folder on the internet. Because members in a bank holiday weekend, so the internet line is heavy. There are so many users. I wish we can get Mister Seku John Barry back, because that was a critical question that we just asked. And then we sort of um lost him immediately. So powerful was the question that we lost the brother immediately. Okay? We lost the brother immediately. But notwithstanding, I mean, the program goes on. Yeah. The program goes on unabated. There's nothing that can stop the then and now. The then and now is marching on. Mister Seku John, they try for connect anyway. When we get time, we'll continue from where we were. But the chat room happened for be very active, Sister um Ayodile Silves. Um, welcome. So brother Seku John, as soon as he join, we, we go continue from where we left off. Ladies and gentlemen. Um, obviously, I like for repeat, because. There is a simple reason for this. As we do this and they get along. Yeah, uh Mister Seku John, I get with you, they say, but because now the backup system now they use. It go difficult for let me call you, because I will lose you. I will lose the entire channel. Now I make a knock in left for use the backup system. Okay, let for let me hands free. I know like for the touch, touch. Whatever, but now the backup system now they use. So what I go advise, I did disconnect you. I want you to try back one more time, okay? I don't disconnect you. Try one more time. This is serious. Brother Emzo Fofana, welcome to the program, my brother. I miss your calls the other day. I tried to respond on a private number and obviously I'm sure say you know the answer, private number. But welcome to the program. Um. Today, we've been supposed to forget. Um, a brother Mohamed Kamara. For talk to we. On many, many issues. Many, many issues. Okay? In a form of an interview, I like for calling like a. Yeah, I like for calling like a. Um, a a chat, like a one to one, like where you are posting, you don't, you know, they talk, we not talk. But unfortunately, I'm unable to forget the brother. Can't call him either, because I use me backup system, where if I try for do that, it will affect me phone. But notwithstanding, this channel is full of heavy, heavyweights. This channel I can tell you now, from across the continent, across the globe. A full of heavyweights. People of academic standing, social standing, economic standing, they are here. Now, all of them are talking, but somewhere in the background, they are. Tonight, I can tell you, I say, we've been get three heavyweights now this channel. I just hope say one day I go able for lure them out, so that we go have a conversation. Because that helps also to be factual for give credence to this station. In the meantime, we've got doctor. Yes, um. Mister Barry, are they approve? I'm approving and then you come on. And then it says adding and then for some reason it says decline. So I'm trying to add you on again, so it's um it's it's um it's loading. I really want you to come on. I really need for you to notice. I really want for you to come up for clarify. But ladies and gentlemen, what we're saying before we lost um. Um, Mister Barry again. Me say that since March thirty first. Nothing fundamentally not changed in that country, what we call Sierra Leone. Nothing fundamentally not changed in that country. And I hope say people and they understand the statement or the argument why they make. Because somehow, some of us can just process this um the suggestions where some of us can make. In a different manner, and before you look and run away with them, and in the age of social media. For let you rectify with you, they say, it becomes difficult. Either you therefore stoop down low to the level, which I will never do. Or I just carry on going. So nothing fundamentally change. Nothing. Okay? Now just party the normal switch power. The country is still the same as it was yesterday, as it is today. Despite all the mistakes. All the anger, the fear, the dis, the volatility, the insecurity, the pain, the strength, the fear. The angry, the disgruntledness. We are still the same. Would it exist today, just like how we exist yesterday? This not fact, not so. It's completely fact. Teskuru, welcome to the program, my brother. Roland Karimo, welcome to the program. The country is still the same and I mean it in every respect. Nothing has fundament fundamentally, remember the critical word. Because if you want make or you want, you know, you water down the argument into something else or divata into something else. Remember this critical word and the emphasis is mine. There is nothing fundamentally different today as it was yesterday. Okay? The country still remains the same. Since the change of hand. We not lost an inch of our territory to any foreign power, to any foreign nation, to any sovereign nation. Another nation, we're still the same. Yeah, and Mister Barry, what I mean by the same. Fundamentally the same, I think you need for with law develop, I've been on say earlier. And as I say, I'm critically again, because people like you of critical mind don't join. And um this is what I, this is why I'm saying what I'm saying. That nothing has fundamentally changed. I'm not making judgment on the new party. You should have me on your record, by the way. Now me now the man we see. We have to give the new rulers a honeymoon period, even though most people were not down with that. But I'm on record, check my videos, check the platform, social media. Check it. Check um reflection, check um um what is it called? Then and now, the the other brand, the platform. I'm on record for saying this, that this administration needs to have a honeymoon period, just like all other governments should have. It can be automatic. I can't take over today and you expect me for begin solve problems today. No. I'm not naive enough for think that we the no sir. Okay? But the sense why I try for say out of this is that nothing fundamentally has changed is this. The coun- the country is still the same as it was, not in that political sense. So despite all our flaws as a people, I'm looking at it holistically, the four corners of the country. Okay? Despite all we volatility, we vexation, the infectiousness who we get. The anger, the pain, the hunger, the disgruntledness. We still exist today as as the same people. Tell me now, have we lost any land to people? Ladies and gentlemen, hold on there, there's a call coming in. Still live. I have to apologize because I keep getting people that were the, you you know, where they call in the background. Because now the backup system are they use, so I they get boku boku interference. Okay, so dear, I will forgive me. Mister Abraham Joshua Sahid. Welcome to the program, my brother. Sister Balu Kadijatu, welcome to the program. Okay? Let me see. The brother is trying to join, but for some reason I can't get hold of him. Let me try, Sister Kadijatu, he's asking to be brought on camera, whether it's going to work. I don't know why, but doesn't to be working. It does not seem to be working. Okay? It does not seem to be working. Now, what do we do here? Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, we are talking about, I was just saying something and somebody was disagreeing, but apparently not understanding the context. I was just trying to provide perspective that there's nothing fundamentally different today. As it were, than it was, you know, from um March thirty first. I'm not being political about this. I'm just being country first. So the country is still the same as it was. Since the change of government, we haven't lost an inch of our territory to any foreign power. Any other nation bothering us or otherwise. So everything fundamentally remains the same. So despite all we anger, all we mistake, all we insecurity, all we disgruntledness, all we pain, all we anginess. We still very much the same. Okay, we are the same people as it were yesterday. We exist the same way yesterday as the same way we the exist today. Okay? And why? The same people that we vote for Doctor um honest by Coroma in APC, ten years plus some time ago. Are the same people that have voted for the all, I mean, the Sierra Leone People's Party of His Excellency Julius Mada Bio. That's what I mean by fundamentally the same, is we are just the same people. The analogy or the logic where I they try for make now is. Despite the odds, despite the political difference. Tell me how much we ship we. How much we make we different? Where we all occupy that seems quite a mile of a country called Sierra Leone. How much really divide us away from politics? So that's why at this point in time, we need for realizing. Things have changed. And this is what it is. And then we all just go along. Until when is that time to change again? Because it's a process that every periodically, there are changes and fundamentally. Nothing, not really the change in term of who's quite miles and borders and etcetera. I hope say I try for make sense of what I try for say. Today as well, we'll be also the touch on. Issues regarding the cleanup campaign. But the brother we we lost, it don't make a brilliant point. I don't think there's much we can touch on. Because I just make unclear, while we applaud the initiative. The action of the ruling government. In terms of the cleanup campaign. Removing a tons of dirty, because a clean nation is an educated nation. An educated, educated nation rather, is a prosperous nation. An educated nation is a prosperous nation. A healthy nation is an educated nation. So we can talk about an inversely conversely is almost where you will arrive at. So this government on the one. But. This government appear for long go the. Extra mile in a, in a, in a wrong way. By virtue of some of the minister them, specifically Mister Sandy. You cannot hold the people of Sierra Leone at ransom. This is not a junta. And when I say I'm, I don't mean for denigrate or even make reference to the leader. I just say this is how junta's, you know, uh governments that are not legitimate can behave. But this is a legitimate government and therefore has to rule by the law. So not hold people are transform again, please. And I'm sure say the head of state, in the infinite wisdom, go don't rein um Doctor Sandy in. For tell and say, well, you go too far, your enthusiasm was just too much. Mister um Seku John. Um, I don't. Mister, um, Sekujor, um, I don't accept you again. And you show connecting again. I hope say I not lose you again because there is a brilliant point for that we make. There is a very brilliant point for that we make. Okay, just before we come to the end of this program. Brilliant point for make me brother. Okay. Did I manage to get him? No. For some reason, I'm able to forget, eh, Mister Sekujobari. I wonder what, what, what is going on? Yeah. Why is it? Mister Desmond Kai Jimmy. What is going on, man? You've made contribution to this channel once or twice and your contribution is unmatched, is unrivalled. You say, you know, yes, so much tough, which is so much mature. But unfortunately, I've been unable to get you back on this channel, but I'm going to try one of these days. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we are about for come to an end to this, eh, program. We've spent quite enough time. It was disappointing at first because the reason behind this, although they broadcast every Sunday, there's nothing that's going to stop this channel. If there are people who thinking that this brings an end to the channel or there are no backup programs, they are mistaken. Anyway, we were supposed to have a young brother on this program. Who was meant to tell us a lot. Is active, for Siferos, loyal by many respects, a patriot. And, um, he be aspire for be a parliamentarian, a constituency one, 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 under the all people's congress. But unfortunately, he not been successful. So we will want bring and come on, so we could talk in earnest. Unfortunately, we're not able to forget him, but that's fine. So the channel move on. In, in place, we'll be able for bring an academic, another academic. Mister Sekujobari. We articulate the question, the way we ask, the answers to the question, the way we ask. Very finely, we make some people in the chat room actually agree. It a try for comeback because we ask our one critical question. Unfortunately, I don't know why we're not able to forget. Come back because are they accept in approve, are they accepting invitation, approval of them? Yet for some reason. I'm not able for, I'm not even forget them. Why? I don't know. That's why I don't really like this backup system. But notwithstanding, we are almost coming to the end. And, um, I want to, I want to say thank you to the participants of today's program. This will be, um, Sister Fatmata Kamara. Earlier on, we get a caller from the United States, Sister Effie will make a very, very brilliant point. She touch on critical issues and that's who they look for. Ladies and gentlemen, next time when we have the program. Let we have a conversation as a people. One thing we need for know is like, everybody here is protected. Everybody here is protected. There's no one who's going to show rudeness to anyone. Because if you read the ethos, the ethics, the objectives of this program, this channel. It says, keep your ego in check. Everybody has got a view. And all of those views will have to be heard, regardless of your religious, social, political, sexual or otherwise affiliation. So please feel free for talk to this channel. On this note, I want to say thank you to Sister Fatmata Kamara, brother Sekujon Barry, ever so much brilliant as usual. Sister Angela Aminata Sorika Mara, who is always been there with this channel. Sister Doreen Wuri, Sister Frances Fode. Um, Brother Emzo Fofana, Sister Emma Copa. Sister Nancy Yamasolonte, Desmond Kai Jimmy, Abraham Joshua Sahid. Um, and many more that I can name. Sister Elfrida Elliot Masako, Kadijatu Saiduba. Um, Mamu Alkonte, I mean, these are familiar names. Brother Moses Adolphus, Massa Boy, Masako. Brother Victor Gabba, I mean, Victor Gabba, man, you are special for this channel. Sister Fuambai Sia Amadou, Sister Princess Laila Ravina, Brother Christian Koji. I could go on naming, brother Abdul Zito, and if I don't call your name, it's because the list is almost endless. I could go on. But I want to say at this particular point in time, how much I appreciate you for always tuning into this channel as we try to speak truth to power. Okay, I always appreciate you and we forever appreciate you. I say this from the depth of my heart. That I will always appreciate you for joining me in other words, so we, together we can speak truth to power. We can talk about issues that are affecting us. Thank you, Sister Fatmata Kamara, for the congratulations, for your kind word of sentiment and all the others. Today, we were unable to get, um, Brother Kamara, Mohammed Kamara, but we did have one or two speakers. We hope that by the time we come back next week, when we'll be talking about something different. And this is what I want to do. I always say it. That I want to talk about policies. I want to move on now away from elections and begin to talk about policies. I'm a policy analyst, by the way. So I want to talk about other analyst, something about my strength. And I hope I will get your support. So this is the direction that I want to go. And hopefully next week when I come up, I will be talking about analysts other than these, you know, here little things. I've already said that we should give this new government a honeymoon period. It's not like in the marriage sense that you just put your legs up or go somewhere and enjoy. No, no, no. There is work still being done, but before we begin to ask the hard questions, let us leave them to try to, to suck in. The new atmosphere. Look at the minister, for example. Of course, no one in their sound mind will agree with him, but in the heat of things, he got carried away and started making proclamations. I have no doubt that retired Brigadier will have pulled him in and asked him caution, caution. And I'm sure next time we're not going to see any of this. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to be coming to you again next week on the issue of policies regarding our government and the way forward. For all of you who joined this channel and to brother Saidu Sekujobari. I'm afraid I will have to end it here, even though you are still trying to connect. But what I'm going to have to try to do as I try to discuss policies next week, I promise you that we will talk about it. I will call you in camera and we can see how we can forge a way forward regarding next week's broadcast. Until then, ladies and gentlemen, just before I leave, I just wanted to highlight again. Congratulations and, um, a pre-birthday greetings to my son who turns twenty four in three days' time on the ninth of May. We love you, son. Of course, you are not exactly where we want you, but who are we? We thank God for life. We thank God for you. You are blessing and hopefully will arrive. May the words of your mom, the prayers of your mom be accepted in Jesus's name. Ladies and gentlemen, it's been marvelous. I'm your host and presenter Prince Kromer, saying a very good night for now. Thank you so much. Bye bye.